We've called the meeting to order. I recall members. Number two, public comment. Number three, SMB CPAs and Associates P L L C to present the year 24 district financial audit to the board. I'm Jay, State of SMB CPAs. I worked for Pat for quite a while, so we've been here around for a while. If you'll turn to page four, it's a little different than last year because last year you were in uniform guidance. There's only two letters in this audit. Because you only spent $750,000 with the federal funds. If you'd spent over $750,000, we would have had three letters and would have been more work and more work on your staff. First letter is the opinion letter of the audit as a financial statement taken on as a whole. It's a qualified opinion because we don't show in general fixed assets. We don't do a tax return. There's no reason to depreciate them and carry them through and show all that appreciation. We buy them, expense them. When we get through with them, we surplus them, dispose of them, and we go buy them. It's an adverse opinion because we don't show it in general accepted accounting principles. We show it in a modified cash basis, which is required by the state of Oklahoma. It's called a regulatory basis. They would like you to show the revenues when they're recognized and their expenses when they're incurred, which means it doesn't fall. We do as what you would call when we receive them, then put them in the bank, we record them. When we expense them, we expense them based on whom we write the PO, even before we write the check for them. So we reduce the budget and that's less to expend when we commit to buying those items. Page seven is our balance sheet. We'll go through the general fund, special revenue capital projects, trust and agency we'll go through later on. General fund, we have $1.8 million. Have warrants payable 326. These are outstanding checks at the end of the year. For unassigned fund balance, 1.5 million or total fund balance, 1.8. And the 1.5, that's for your general operations. It's a whole lot better than it was a few years ago when Bryce started and we've had a negative number there, so it's a good job. Next page is our income statement. We show the revenues collected in the general fund from all sources, state, local, federal, 4.5 million. We expended 4.47. A lot of that is your teachers, stuff for the classroom, transportation. There's not a whole lot left to spend after you pay those items. Had an increase of 81,000. We stopped with the check, $75, so our total increase, 81 at 90, 85. Fund balance at the end of the year is 1.5 million. Next page is page nine. It's your budget tax. It's the same income statement that's on page eight. The only difference is we show a beginning budget and ending budget. There would have been a change in that budget. We would have got supplemental appropriation. The board would have had to approve before we could expend those funds. So we would have known there was a bit of change in the budget. Pages 10 through 18. These are your notes to your financial statement. There's a lot of information in here about your school system, about your funds, your type of accounting, budgets. If you'll turn over to page 14, this is your long-term debt. Have bonds of 23, originally for 615,000, will pay off July 26. Bonds of 24, pay off July 26, 750,000. Have a lease purchase for equipment and building improvements. That'll pay off August of '27. Total lease payments will be 4.7. Interest components, 507 for a total of 4.2 million. Page 17. Tells about your employee retirement system. Down towards the bottom, you can see in page 24, we spent 370,000, '23, 396, and 354 in '23. This is for your teachers, your support staff, and your employers. That's their part and our part will be contributed in total. Page 19. Again, page seven, we said we'd talk about the special revenue fund. That's your building fund and your child nutrition fund. We had $264,000 in the building fund, $64,000 in the child nutrition. And we had outstanding checks of $5,000 in the building fund and almost $10,000 in the child nutrition. Page 20, trust and agency. This is a breakdown of the trust and agency on page seven. Activity funds, 241,000. We'll show a breakdown of that later on because we don't show it on the income statement because those belong to those activity groups. They really don't, they're not school funds. They are, but they're not. Have warrants payable in the activity fund, 27,000. And due to activity groups, 214,000. Have a gift fund of $122. B1, this is a breakdown. Stick it to the table. On page eight, for a special revenue. Building fund, we have $217,000 received this year and we paid out $210,000 for support services. Ending fund balance, 259,000. Child nutrition, received 196,000. Paid out 255,000 for food service items. Had a decrease of 59,000. We'll show why here in just a minute. 12,000 of adjustments for accuments. These are POs that were set up in reserve last year. We didn't use them last year, so we brought them back into the financial statements this year. We're totaled $46,000 deficit in the child nutrition and ending fund balance, $54,000. Page 22. Again, this is our budget actual for the last, for page 21. No difference in page 21. The only difference is we show the budget, any beginning and ending. And there was no changes. Page 23. These are activity accounts. You see, there's quite a few. This is where most of the problems happen. And Kendra would tell you, she probably has to ride herd on most of them pretty hard because you teach them how to do it, then they leave, or you change sponsors, and then you start over. It's a continual. Each one of these accounts has a sponsor and usually a different one. They have the same responsibilities as treasurer and the incomers clerk. They have to write a receipt to the students when they receive the money. Then they have to turn the money into the activity fund custodian on a daily basis. Because when those funds reach $100 in all accounts, then she has to make a deposit on a daily basis. The activity fund custodian is the only one those funds can be turned into. We learned that this past year with another school. Then they can read a PO, get it issued, get it approved. Then they can go buy the funds or the items that it was approved for. They get a invoice or a packing slip, they sign it. That way we know who got them and where they're at. If they don't, and we look at the receipts really hard because what happens is if they leave those funds laying around in a desk drawer or on their desk or whatever, and they disappear, it's not the school's responsibility and it's not the kids. They turn their money in. It's that sponsor's. They're responsible for that money. Until it's turned into the activity fund custodian, they're not relieved of that duty till then. And Pat always said, if there's an opportunity, there's going to become a need and the next thing you know, they're gone. And I remember, and this was before you, Bryce. You remember when we came and we found the $3,000 in the ag teacher's drawer?
Yeah.
Six and nine months old.
I get full of checks and cash in his desk drawer in the back.
So it happens. And the other thing was, we had another school this year, they, I can't remember those things. I won't bring up the other one. But they, the ag teacher had money. They sold Willy Bill sausage. They left it in the room. They waited and counted the money and they kept counting it, kept counting it. It was $2,000 short. They never did figure out where the money went to. But they waited two weeks to report it and it's too late. We don't, we can't trace it back and see what happened to them, so it's important we turn those funds in on time. Page 24 is reconciliation of our depository. These are reconciling the activity fund. Page 25. This is our schedule of federal awards. And we spent $715,000 this year. That's the reason if it's under 750, in two more years, it becomes over a million and then you're in uniform guidance. So you may never be in a uniform guidance again because hopefully we don't have all the COVID money again. Then over there to the right-hand side down at the bottom, we talked about the deficit. Why, we had funds that they sent us prior years for COVID. Everybody was free and they just kept sending us all kinds of money. Well, we've got all those funds to spend now. We spent some of them, but we haven't spent them all.
Meaning etiquette.
I forgot to turn it off. But the last letter is on page 26. This is our letter on internal control. This is where we look at everything else. We look at your payroll, your teacher's retirement, read your minutes, look at your POs, your receipts, anything and everything that has to do with the financial activity of the school. We look at it here and give an opinion on it, give us a clean opinion. And where do you want me to start?
Give the what opinion?
Clean opinion. We have no follow-ups. So Kendra, you don't come down. Because the activity funds were always here.
Yep.
Cool. Is there any questions?
Good job, Judy.
Thank you.
Kendra's not here. I've told her good job too, but they do.
They do a good job. We enjoy working with them. No questions?
Did you learn at another school that they couldn't turn the funds in?
Oh, there's lots of them. And it just never fails that, well, we had three of them last year. We called the sheriff, so. So it was a fun year last year.
They devolved quickly, huh? They devolved quickly.
Oh, yeah. Well, they had a superintendent that was an activity fund sponsor. He had a good chance of making funds disappear. And the law got involved when we drawn him off. But then he went to another school and now, he may be in jail now because he did it at the next school.
Bryce touches nothing.
That's all right. I can tell you a better one. Had one that did a lease purchase and you know that when you do a lease purchase, the bank has to write the check for the expenditures. He didn't know that. He's brought money out of the school, so then when he went to get his lease purchase money, they said, "We can't write it to the school." So he falsified invoices that they didn't even do.
Picked it up himself?
Yeah, that should have been a federal offense.
Do I need to memorize something for you?
Yes. Bryce has got it.
Okay.
You can just email it to me.
Okay.
Any questions? I'm gonna head home.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yep.
Very much.
Thank you.
Don't get bolted off the road.
Well, I don't think. It's not supposed to come in here later tonight, is it?
It was pretty windy on my return.
It's crazy windy out there right now.
I'll be home waiting for that. See you later. Thanks.
All right. Thanks again.
Discuss to vote to approve or not approve 2024 audit from SMB Associates as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve. One second.
Gee. Ran off.
Thank you very much. Arthur.
Yes. Goodness.
Gibson. Yes.
Number five, principals.
Stand up over here. We had a fun time celebrating Valentine's Day at school. Thank you to all the parents who donated items for their class parties. We've also had another O A T T grant meeting and are continuing to learn great strategies to use in our classrooms. The K-20 Center will actually be visiting Cherokee on Friday where they'll get to come and see the strategies we're using and the technology and how we're using in our classrooms. So we're excited to have them come visit. We're getting ready to have our third SNAP assembly, so be looking for your students' red bags. I want to thank FCC LA students for prepping those for us and bringing them over. Mrs. Cudmore had her annual sequoia party today for students who read at least three sequoia books and then they're able to vote on their favorite, so they're always looking forward to that. We're looking forward to parent-teacher conferences next week on Monday and Wednesday. And we're also excited about the book fair next week. The theme is a reading reef adventure. There will be two events, Deep Dive with Donuts in the morning of Tuesday from 7:50 to 8:30, and then Catch the Reading Wave with Grandparents will be on Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:30, and the book fair will be open during parent-teacher conferences. So, about it?
Link's a baseball game, so I told him how recover he is for him. He's got several things listed, so those are all in front of you there. But I'll go through these quickly. Price and Perry Co along with Aubrey Hughes made a premium sale at the Northwest District Livestock Show. And I believe that's going on or there's a banquet right now. So I'll just bear heed it. The speech team is gearing up for the regional contest, which is on March, oh, sorry, that's not right. Yeah, March 28th and 29th. Casey Shelton, Elise Rogan, Grace Jackson, J.C. Kimmernau, Katie Dawson, Macy Kowanson, and Kayla Eckert all qualified for the state vocal solo and ensemble contest. Seventh and eighth grade academic team placed third at regionals a few weeks ago, so they will be competing at state in April. Jack Barker, who was one of our winners of our vocal spelling bee, made it to the regional spelling bee at O C, O triple C. And that will be on March the 8th at 10:00 a.m. Our January Students of the Month, sponsored by our Cherokee Education Foundation. In junior high were Aubrey Hughes and Creed Patterson. And in high school, Veronica Castro and Mason Ryle. Mrs. Spencer is our FCC LA teacher. Was recognized by the O E R V as one of the top 20 teachers for 24, 25 out of over 1,200 nominations. She received a check for $5,000 for herself as a prize. And then the Cherokee FCC LA chapter also got a $2,000 check for a donation to that program. This Friday, our sixth through eighth grade have the dance sponsored by the FCC LA. We have five of the six winners to attend the AEC Energy Camp. Usually AEC will send four eighth graders from the service area, but this year they had a lot of great applicants and were able to come up with two more spots. So those are, those kids are Jordan Alvidarez, Kendall Collins, Kayla Eckert, Colton Fisher, and Creed Patterson. And then we had Tessa Littlefield and Anna Keiner selected for the youth tour delegates, and they will represent us and Alpha Alpha Electric in Washington DC this summer. Tessa was also selected to attend the high school leadership conference in Norman this year. Only 300 students nationwide were selected to attend that. This Friday is our last scheduled Friday of the school year, and then we will have Fridays off. Spring break is less than two weeks away. Basketball did wrap up and we had the all-conference players for the Oregon Conference. Naomi Hine, Kenley Patterson, and for the boys, Hayden Roberts. Honorable mentions, Rochesney Berry, Veronica Castro, Jayden Peterson, and Gentry Nickel. And then academic all-conference, which is for seniors with a cumulative GPA of at least 3.5. Those were Chesney Berry, Naomi Hine, and May Nettles. The Cherokee Strip All-Conference players were Naomi Hine and Chesney Berry with honorable mentions being Veronica Castro, Kenley Patterson, Jayden Peterson, and Gentry Nickel. And the academic all-conference for that conference is comprised of juniors and seniors with a GPA of at least 3.5. Those are Chesney Berry, Naomi Hine, May Nettles, Veronica Castro, Kenley Patterson, Tessa Littlefield, Mariela Herrera, Riley Dow, and Gavin Guppy.
We're good. Can we split these out? Are, has everybody got a look at those? Because they're on the A through F.
Oh, I think you just, if we just want to present that as consent engine items, A through F, now I can go through and discuss specifics.
So if I qualify items, which concerns reports and items, routine nature normally approved, the board meetings will be approved by the vote unless any board member desires to have separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent engine, a consistent discussion, consideration, and approval of the following, A through F.
Go through, go to, unless there's any questions on that, on last week, not last week, last month, minutes, go to B and look at our general fund. There was only a few expenses on here that were not just routine things. The general medical devices, and we talked about that a little bit, I believe, last month. The AD devices that we bought on some supplies, those were $7,773. And, you know, I would like to mention, we did get a couple donations for those. I'd sent some requests out to some businesses. And so we did get about $1,500 donated towards that cost from ACV Bank. And then Janet Hoister also donated towards those things. So we really appreciate those donations. Towards that, we have those in now and in all the right places and got those things stocked back up. So that was a bigger expense. That's definitely something that we needed and I'd rather know that we have those in place now. We have our school board election coming up, so we did have some costs associated with that. So for the Alpha Alpha County Election Board, $1,878.52. And that will cover the cost of those things that go along with the election. Lucky bills, we had to have some work done on the outdoor freezer. And so that was another one, $4,472. That was a little bit higher there. Everything else, pretty much kind of business as usual. Electric bill, gas bill were a little higher, but cold weather.
How old are our freezers?
Well, we just had the one inside overhauled last summer. I mean, last summer. Might have been two years ago, but I feel like it was last summer. They redid that. The one outside that they had to work on, I would say that's probably 10 years. It's been that long?
No, it's the, your report Donald left. We were still in the other building where they put it in.
So six years. That was close, yeah.
Yeah.
Our other accounts there, building fund, APS Fire Company, annual inspection fees. And then East End Food Services and Child Nutrition, just our monthly expenses there. Kendra's not here for anything with the activity fund. But, you know, basketball's wrapping up and we're getting ready to try and meet some baseball games going this spring. So it slows down a little as far as some of this is concerned, but we have a lot of fundraisers going on too at this time. Treasurers' report. If you look at our accounts across, they look really healthy right now, which is a good thing. Of course, we have, this is the time here, we get most of our tax checks come in all at once. We won't get a lot of that after, so we'll have a lot more expenses to go out and those will kind of balance out. But as of right now, everything's pretty healthy. I'll discuss a little bit more of my superintendent report on just some revenue outlooks once I get to that later. Couple fundraisers, oh, sorry, that's not a fundraiser. FCC LA would like to request for us to approve them to travel to Atlanta, Florida this summer for their national FCC LA convention. I'm not sure how many kids just yet, but I think there will be a handful for sure. Go with that. And then item F, and I don't know. Mrs. Rathgiver has been here over 40 years and she is going to retire. She's been doing some.
Sorry.
For the last several years, she's been doing some reading intervention things over there, part-time at the elementary. But yeah, over 40 years as an educator here at Cherokee Elementary. I just want to read a little bit of this. I won't read the whole letter that she sent to us, but she says, "While at Cherokee, I've been blessed to have had the opportunity to touch the lives of so many children. It was a pleasure to learn as much from them as it has been for me to teach them. I'm also grateful to all the colleagues I worked with for their knowledge, assistance, and motivation throughout my years at Cherokee. I will be fully engaged until my retirement and will hope in any way I can during this transition. I'm very appreciative of everyone's support during my time working at Cherokee. As I move on to the new opportunities off to retirement, I wish Cherokee Public Schools a much continued success and all the best. Sincerely, Charmaine Rathgiver." So I've been here quite a while, a long time. So we appreciate her and for her to come to us this early and give us that information sure helps with our planning and stuff, so appreciate that as well. appreciate that as well.
When do kids go to Orlando for, did you say that? Sorry. What month do you know that they're going to?
June. I think, or, no, actually, it's July, it's like, or, it's July. Yeah.
And they've done this before, is that correct?
Yeah, they go every year, the national, it's always somewhere different. And it's been San Diego, and Seattle, and Denver, and Austin, Orlando. I'll make that vote into approve.
I'll second. Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. Item number seven, proposed executive session to discuss the employment of principals for the 25, 26 school year and new support personnel. This is a board to retire in due time session, vote to employ or unemployed. Lane Pruitt is junior high school principal, Kyla Patterson is elementary principal for the 26 school year, and Aaron Hoggard as elementary custodian pursuant to 25 OS 307 lead one.
Make a motion to adjourn the session. I'll second. Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item C, discussion and vote to acknowledge or return the open session.
Make a motion to adjourn the session.
I'll second it. Open session. Statement of minutes of the executive session.
The executive session, we discussed the employment of principals for the 25, 26 school year and new support personnel to employ or not employ. Lane Pruitt as junior high high school principal, Kyla Patterson as elementary principal for the 25, 26 school year, and Aaron Hoggard as elementary custodian.
Okay, number eight, discussion and vote to approve or not approve. Lane Pruitt is junior high high school principal, Kyla Patterson is elementary principal, and Aaron Hoggard as elementary custodian.
I would just make a recommendation that Lane Pruitt, we hired as junior high school principal, Kyla Patterson as elementary principal, and Aaron Hoggard as elementary custodian.
I have a motion to approve. Collins, second. Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the following annual contracts.
So, these are all vendors or people that we've used before. There are some increases. ADPC, first increase in over 10 years, and it was an increase of $444. That's our accounting software that we use. So, we would really like to continue with that. OKTLE and CEES for the 25, 26 school year. Those are, that's the company that we use for teacher evaluations, administrative evaluations. And then CEES, Barlow Education Management Services. We've been using those for a number of years for federal programs, special education, helping us out with the reporting and several things there. They've been very, very beneficial there. So, those are three that we have used and would like to continue to use for the next school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual contracts, A to C.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ten, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the updated parental involvement policy.
So, we already, and this was updated, we have a parental involvement policy, but with some of the requirements the state has now, it needs to be a little more detailed. So, in this policy, it does go into a lot more detail about specific parental rights rather than just a blanket statement that parents have access to education records and can request those in the office, which is kind of what it used to look like. This policy also includes a process that they can make a written request for information, and how that's done, what timeframe they can expect to get it back. The old policy didn't have that, the new requirement, there is a, there is a requirement that the policy has that in there now. Like I said, it's very detailed. There are several new things there that just were not listed in the old policy. So, this comes directly from OS SBA and what they've given out to schools, and so it's already been approved by them.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated parental involvement policy. I'll second. Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number 11, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the proposals submitted by R.K. Black Incorporated for new district copy machines and services.
So, and like I said before, made schools and copy machines and other businesses, it's kind of a necessary evil. But this company is located in Enid. They come with some very high references from some area schools, Enid Public Schools, and Burlington Public Schools uses them. Talking to those superintendents, they're very happy with their service. We just, you know, we go through a lot of paper and a lot of copies. This company also has some things in here. I believe that like in the summertime, when we're not making a lot of copies, we were still paying a price or a premium as if we were based on how many copies we had made last year. This company doesn't do that. So, if we're not using it in the summer, then we're not paying that additional cost. So, hopefully, you know, over time, this would be beneficial and save us some money. We would get new copiers that would be put on a lease program, so lease those, and then there's a service, service fee that goes along with that. They quoted us a lower price than what we're paying now monthly, not a lot different, but it is lower. So, that would be good, and I think it's good just to keep equipment updated, especially when it gets used like that. And they are on the state approved contract list, so.
And they're in Oklahoma. Our, the one we're on now is in Madison Lodge, Kansas.
Yeah.
Did you say Enid or where did you say?
Yeah, yeah.
Enid.
Yeah, Enid.
Yeah. Cool.
Is this a yearly contract?
Yeah, I think that's something, well, we could go into, are there options in there? We have options if we go in on.
I'm sure there's options.
Maybe a three-year, a five-year. This one would be, this one would be for five years, the way they have it written out here, 69, 383, 39. If we purchase those machines outright, they've got a list up there, it would be almost $24,000. Usually, at the end of these, you have an option to either, I think, own the machines at the end of.
Whenever we will own, once the leases paid off, they're ours. And then at that time, if we want to get new updated things, then they'll take them, and unless we want to keep them here somewhere, they'll take them, trade them in probably, and get different ones.
See how it works. You could call the old WAF, WAF now and start bidding war.
And some of the, some of the service things haven't really been that great. So, and I think this new company, if I'm not mistaken, has kind of a policy that I think their service people get a bonus if they don't get called next to fix something. So, incentive to get it right the first time.
Six weeks, if they don't get it called the next six weeks after they've been somewhere to fix something, they get a bonus.
Nice. So, that's a, that's a good incentive out there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay, number 12, discussion and vote to surplus or not surplus, two black charging cards.
If you don't want to read it, I'll show you.
I was like.
Yeah, everything's listed there. So, some old Chromebooks, charging cards. Chromebooks were not purchased with any federal dollars. I think that they've probably gone through and stripped them out and done all kinds of things that they, they can with them, but we need to surplus these and see if there's a company out there that might, you know, be able to come pick them up, or if not, we just need to find out where to dispose them, but they're really no use to us anymore. I think this Tucker would like to get them out of the way.
I'll make a motion to surplus. I'll go first.
I'll second.
Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. Superintendent's report.
I'm going to keep it pretty short because we've had kind of a longer meeting than we're used to, so. Legislation, right now, there's several educator-related bills, some of them are good. I don't think there's anything out there right now, it's just super controversial. The cell phone bill, I do think will pass through, so we will be looking at that and what we can do with our policies to, you know, fit there. There are, there was another bill last week made out of the Education Committee that I thought was kind of odd. It would require all schools to use the same student information system, and as you know, most of you, we just switched student information systems. So, I really don't know that why that's a necessary bill. I don't know where that is coming from, and there's some other things in it that I don't think have anything to do with student information. And so, that one, it's Senate Bill 141, and so it's kind of out of the Senate, made it out of the committee. I talked to Senator Peterson a little bit about it via email. Just something to keep an eye on. I, like I said, I don't think that it's necessary, and I surely hope that after we've got a new student information system in place, we're not going to be forced because of a legislative mandate to go back to something else or to switch again. We don't want to do that, and I don't think that it's, that's a lonesome control thing. So, anyway, I better get off that soapbox for a minute. Like I said, we'll keep an eye on all those things. Gross production is a little concerning right now, and I don't want to put a damper on anything, but it's, it's well below where we were at this time last year. And so, we're going to have to keep an eye on, on that and what the market does over the next few months, as we make plans for next year. Our tax numbers are pretty even, kind of comparable to what we were last year, even with the protests. We got a little extra, but we didn't really lose any big chunks there. So, county went down just a little, not, not a whole lot. So, as far as financial things right now, it's okay. We did get several things that were some one-time money, and so we know we're not going to have those again next year. So, we'll kind of keep an eye out on that and get into that a little bit more maybe in the next month or two. So, other than that, thanks again to ACV Bank and Janet Oyster for making donations. If anybody else wants to make a donation, we'd be more than happy to take those. We do appreciate that, and I think that's all I got.
Okay, 14, any new business?
No new business.
15, gentlemen?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Gentman?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?